Sorry for the delay. All right. We're going to open the meeting, and it is being recorded. And the first is A&amp;R's.
There are no A&amp;R's tonight.
All righty. Next is a hearing beside family LLC. Evening.
Sit down.
Never sit down.
Good evening, board. Thank you very much for your time. Would you like to open up with questions to me?
Why don't you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Joe Simon. I'm the general manager for Diamond Auto Group. I work with David. He unfortunately could not make it tonight. He had another engagement, but I represent the company for him. I'm the general manager of the store. We're here to speak about what our intentions are for rebuilding the Faith Ave portion.
I think you probably want to give the board a status update. Tonight was when your hearing was continued too. I think they're expecting to see plans and all of that kind of stuff.
Presentation with an engineering.
Okay. We are asking for a continuance on Nest. We have met with our engineers and everything, but due to the Concom kind of changing where we needed the road to go, we needed to re-engineer everything with Waterman. He did come down to the dealership and kind of map out where it is going to go, so we're in agreeance with that. We just need to have him finish up on his end with the engineering for you guys to see, but it kind of threw a loop in it when Concom moved the road over a little bit because of our wetland situation that we had at the dealership. Just want to let the board know that we are committed to this project. We have a lot invested in it already, and we do continue to move forward with these plans.
Adam, do you have anything to?
I don't. We haven't seen subdivision plans since before the joint hearings. They went through the initial review process, and those joint hearings were July, I believe, if I recall correctly. Yeah, the second one was, I believe, the second meeting in July, so it's been...
I think the first one was in June.
Yeah, yeah. And I think that the final decision from Concom was sort of rendered at the meeting in July. I think that the continuance from this board was requested two months ago in August, and I haven't seen any movement on the project. I understand that they did commit to altering the roadway with conservation and moving, I believe, 30 feet further to the east to reduce the wetland impact. I guess I'm surprised or confused as to the commitment in August and taking two months to turn around what generally would be minor alterations to the engineering. I haven't had a lot of conversations with Waterman because they haven't submitted anything, so there hasn't been. It's more been, "Are you guys, do you have plans? Are you moving forward?" And they've said that they're still working with their clients, and that's about the extent of their response.
Jonathan, do you have anything to ask?
Well, I guess just as you're planning to return, major comments, I think would just be surrounding the landscaping. I know which was an issue before, kind of a minimal amount of landscaping that had been put in as opposed to what was provided on the plan. Obviously, liking you to take that into consideration and trying to get that better into performance. Additionally, just kind of the drainage issues on the site, considering the amount of pavement, the curvature of the road and making sure that's safe, which was an issue in the previous one. And then I think we just need to see the plan and review it.
Wendy?
Good.
Ronnie?
Well, I'm confused that we've had so many continuances, and at the last minute when we get to the meeting, we hear that it's continued after all of us have made an effort to come. We had said a couple of weeks ago or a couple of meetings ago that we weren't going to continue it again. And there's still no presentation or any reaction. It doesn't seem as like there's been a lot of commitment between your engineering people and you people.
And I do apologize about that, but we have been working with Waterman. And one thing too is we were looking to see, because this is going to take about a year or so to, you know, you have to go through winter. So we were seeing how many spots, you know, we're losing about half our dealership on the side, you know, with no commitment to acquiring Faith Ave, now the old Faith Ave, which we know we will be able to do that once everything is done and we go through it. But, you know, moving the road over a little bit is taking up our property. I know that we would be able to acquire Faith Ave in the interim now, and David understands that as well. And we are working with Waterman to fix this situation and get some plans in front of you.
Paul?
I don't think you'd be able to acquire Faith Ave until after you've constructed the roadway that you're proposing. That has to go before town meeting anyway to acquire that.
Right.
So you're not going to be able to use that part of the road for parking or for your business until you come in with plans and complete the addition or the additional roadway that you're going to put in. And it has to be accepted by our engineers and it has to be accepted by the town before you can worry about that. And if you keep putting it off, you're going to be in the middle of winter, and we'll be doing this next year.
Bill, can I ask you a question about that?
Sure.
What's the status of this project as you know it right now?
This project?
Hmm.
I haven't seen anything since July on any plans, so we, right now, it's a standstill until we get the new submitted revised plans.
Adam, let me ask you a question. If in fact we decided not to continue this, what would take place?
You would need to make an up or down decision on the approval of the subdivision. Because if you decide to not continue it, then you're essentially closing the public hearing and you're restarting the clock on finalizing the decision, and your statutory time limits come into play. So because there have been a series of continuances, the clock keeps getting frozen. But once you decide to not continue, you need to vote in one manner or the other.
Then how many days, Adam?
135 days is the statutory requirement from filing. So once it's filed, that starts ticking until the opening of the public hearing. Then once the continuance, it stops until you reopen the public hearing. So it's really sort of an odd and choppy, you know, it takes some figuring to get to that 135, but I guess if you decided to not continue, you need to close the public hearing, and your opportunity to intake additional information is over.
Limited.
It's not limited, it's over.
Over.
Because you can't take evidence outside of the public hearing. So you would, to my mind, other than, you know, crafting a decision, there's no reason to not vote the same night that you close a public hearing. There isn't, you know, you're not waiting for, well, you are waiting for information, but I don't believe that the information you're waiting for would be available within something that would constitute the timeframe that you would need to be within.
Through the chair, I just wanted to add that I do see a benefit if we are able to change the alignment of the roadway. Currently, the alignment is poor, and there is a benefit to do that for the town. Obviously, things are moving slower than everybody would like, but I would like to see that happen at some point and eventually abandon that section of roadway that curves around. It's just an awkward alignment, somewhat dangerous, and a longer section of roadway that we have to maintain. So there is a benefit to the town ultimately, but certainly we need some commitment from them to move forward and getting the plans to us.
Absolutely understood. And if you guys wanted to give us a, if the board would like to give us a timeline on that, you know, we will definitely have it done. We are in talks with Waterman now and providing you this information.
How much response, how much, how many talks, how much have you been in talks with them in the last couple of months?
We talk with Waterman at least once a week. At least once a week. And he came down and he actually mapped out exactly where the new road would go. We kind of coned it off and see what we'd be losing, gaining, and everything. And that took place right after the last, maybe a couple of weeks after the last meeting that we had. So we are definitely, it is our intent to go forward with this project, providing the board lets us, and we're not, we would definitely like to continue this project.
Well, it seemed like a good idea when it was first proposed, what, two years ago? Or a year and a half, two years ago? I still think it's a good proposal, but it seems to be stalled.
Well, we did have some issues as far as like the wetlands and everything like that as well, and we have had it re-engineered, and Ecotec was involved, and Mrs. Washburn's, you know, plans came into play, and we kind of put everything together, and we're definitely willing to move forward with this project and make it work.
If we were to, Adam, if we were to vote to continue this again, could we put any strong wording in there that would prompt a decision and completion of the, all the engineering and rock before us?
I mean, the continuance is really just the continuance of the hearing. I think that the board can certainly express their point of view and their desire to not have further continuances. I guess my suggestion, if the board does wish to continue this, is we have to look at what a reasonable timeframe to turn the plans around is, to work with conservation because they would need to sort of bless the project even if they haven't finally given an approval prior to this board taking action, because we don't want to get to a point where you approve it and then have to amend it. And for Graves to do their turnaround, I mean, Mr. Brooks alluded to the board taking the position that previous continuances were their last continuance, which I think is sort of the language that you're looking at. And again, it's more of a presentation of the board's position than it is any sort of binding language.
Well, I asked Bill how long it would, what would be a reasonable extension? Should we wait till spring?
Bill, would this be better put off till spring, sort of think, get all the ducks in a row and bring it back to us and get through conservation? Or should we do it?
An extension to get the plans submitted or ultimate approval?
Ultimate approval.
Well...
Plans, you know...
Are we under a time constraint for an approval?
No, because they can, every time they continue it, the clock freezes. And I don't want to step on Bill's toes. There's a difference. The continuance that you issue tonight is to when the next hearing would be. So my recommendation would be to not extend that too far. My experience is you give someone too much time. They wait until the end and the last minute. So I know this board only meets once in November and December. I believe Concom does the same thing. So I guess my suggestion would be looking to January, and that should give enough time for plans to be redone, at least one, if not two or more reviews to be sort of finalized, Concom to get their bite at the apple, and then for this board to review what plans are then on the table. I mean, that's going to be two full months, and I think that the plans are substantially completed. And I understand that there's a significant change to some of the geometry, but it shouldn't be to all of the geometry and all of the, all the survey work is done, all the base engineering is there, and now it's figuring out how to take that and make it fit the new design. And not being an engineer, I don't know if that...
Through the chair, I agree with Adam. I think January is certainly enough time for them to get plans submitted and the review process in place and...
You know, I hate to throw this, with all the engineering that's been done and all that everybody's been through, I really find it hard to just throw this aside. You know what I mean? It's too big a, it's too big a deal. Again, I'm only one member of the board, and I need, I need input. Jonathan, you want to?
Yeah. I don't know what not continuing would accomplish. I think it would just crush that back.
Or just stop the program, and we don't want to do that if we have to.
Right. I agree. I guess my question would be more, so what happens next? Like, what's the process? So they're going to re-engineer this on the revised roadway?
Mm-hmm.
Then can we at the same time approve plans, assuming that they get Faith Ave? How does the town think that?
Well, the Faith Ave is completely, has nothing to do with this process.
So they'll have to come back after that to us again?
Well, essentially, what would happen is the road here is its own independent project. So that's what this board is looking at right now. Upon approving that, they would begin construction theoretically in the spring, because they want to get this done. We require that they maintain ownership of the road for a winter. So spring of '15, they're going to be coming to town meeting. And again, this is all assuming that they do all the work. Bill's approved it. They're going to come to town meeting for the town to accept this portion of Faith Ave. If that's the case, at the same town meeting, we would look at abandoning the longer, windier portion of Faith Ave and authorizing the town manager to negotiate a sale.
So that's owned in fee, not a permanent lease?
Correct.
Okay.
And at that point, once this is abandoned, depending on the value, depends on how we dispose of it, if the Diamond Group were to become the owners of it, part of the requirement of purchase and sale would be all of the puzzle pieces that they own around there would be combined into a singular lot through the A&amp;R process.
Okay.
And they would then have fronted along, I'll call it New Faith Ave, because that's fun.
All right. Well, I guess the reason I was asking that is as far as direction for you guys and your engineers. I know that there was talk in the previous public hearing about if that roadway was to be pushed in, you'd be constraining the site, and in that temporary condition until the Faith Ave piece is complete, your operations would be constricted. Considering the length of that time and also considering kind of the, that there's no guarantee that all of those processes will be complete, I think I would want to see, you know, you guys make as good of an attempt as possible to make sure that you meet all of the landscaping and other conditions in that interim step as well, so that we can approve something in case that becomes permanent, rather than having you come in and promote something that's largely paved and then asking us to say, "Well, it's just a temporary condition." I think you got to want to see it be as close to final as possible and then expand once you get the roadway worked on. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks about that.
The town's not going to accept until it's finished. The town meeting isn't.
The earliest that this road would be accepted would be the spring of '15 at this point.
All right. So seeing as this is going to be in this temporary condition for at least two years, I would think we'd want to make sure that whatever you promote, whatever you propose now is as close to meeting those subdivision or rather the site plan requirements as possible.
And that's one thing, that's one thing that we were kind of weighing with this whole thing, that we're going to be losing a lot of space for this two-year period. You know, and, you know, we're weighing that as well with everything, and, you know, we definitely want to continue aware of the constrictions that are going to be there, and we're definitely willing to move forward and try to make this happen.
Wendy, how do you feel?
I agree with Jonathan. I think as long as they make every effort to adhere and make sure that that site looks the way that they presented it to us, that that's, that would be a positive thing. And it would allow it to move forward in 2015, which would, you know, stop delaying it any further.
Ronnie, speaking on landscaping, you're speaking about the whole, everything, right?
Right. When it was first proposed, I know that there was, or at least when it was constructed, it didn't meet a lot of the landscaping requirements.
There's a ton of landscaping to be done.
Yeah.
Around the entire front site, in between the front sites, and then also included in and around the rear site, so...
Landscaping buffers in between, things of that nature, which I think were...
Around the lights and everything.
Not included, et cetera, so... Well, recognize that your site's constricted, but I also want to make sure that if this is going to become a permanent condition, you're not asking of us to waive those requirements with really no guarantee that that's eventually going to be completed. And we, at the end of the day, want to make sure we promote something positive and also give you the feedback now so you can put it into your plan once it be done.
That would not be a problem. Definitely some of that.
What requirements were you asked, saying that they were required, asking us to waive?
Well, Adam, correct me if I'm completely wrong here, but I seem to remember that when the plan came back to us, there were a lot of landscaping requirements, street trees...
Yes. You're talking about once the...
As well as interior landscaping requirements.
The modified site plan?
Right.
Yes, there were. So if we can't do this, this is what we're asking you to approve.
Right.
Had missing landscape islands, missing, ahead of, yes.
Right.
You're correct. There was a lot more pavement and building than there was originally in the plan.
Right. I think that's what I want to, I'd like to see avoided, is that it comes back with kind of an application that's asking us to make all of these waivers to accommodate the situation that was created, so...
Now, would the board, would the board consider that as, like, these landscaping, the landscaping you'd like us to do, would the board consider that as one continuous piece even though we're not going to technically own that piece of Faith Ave?
Well, I think the landscaping was for the addition that you put in, for the additional building and the parking and everything else. That's what that landscaping was for. Evidently, it's substantially not in there yet.
I think some of the buffer landscaping along here, where the walls are, may be reasonable, and the board may be willing to look at waiving that because ultimately this will become one lot.
One lot.
But, I mean, there's a massive amount of interior landscaping and foundation landscaping and buffer landscaping on the top end that just simply wasn't done. And I think that's what Jonathan is talking about wanting to see done. Never mind the landscaping on this lot that goes back to 2008, 2009 agreements.
Our first meeting is January 14th, 2014. That's the second Tuesday in January. That gives you about 85 days approximately. So I would have to say, having that we had said a while back that we weren't going to continue again, but that if we do, that should be more than ample time. And, you know, had been my understanding from somewhere that you weren't doing a lot of response back and forth with Waterman or whoever your engineers, engineers were. And I think that needs to happen, and this, like Adam just said, a lot of the landscaping that was supposed to be done in the past and that's done with the other project still hasn't been done. And just like completely ignoring it, and it's part of our requirements. What would you want us to do? We should just like walk away from it and not look at it.
Absolutely.
You know?
I need the reasonable request. Absolutely.
Well, I would suggest that we continue it to the 14th of January with the understanding that it will be completed at that time. And you've gone through the process, you have the plans to Mr. Coyle and our engineering department, and gone before conservation, and come to us for final approval.
Okay, you heard what the majority of the board wants from Diamond, not from you personally, but from Diamond. And it's very important that any of the uncompleted projects that are already set in place are completed. So you can pass that on to the powers that be, and that, that's going to create a whole bag of worms if you don't do that.
All right. So we have the consensus of not only the board, but Mr. Coyle, that this is something that should be continued. How would you want to continue it? In other words, what conditions would you, can any conditions beyond the continuance?
No, I mean, it's a public hearing. It's just continuing the public hearing so that the clock freezes and that the hearing stays open. So I think that the board has made their position clear, and I think that on January 14th, if that's the date that you choose...
Well, I'll still be here then.
Is that a date that you feel you can meet?
Yes, sir. I believe we can.
Are there, Stacy, you have an hour and a minute. Are there any other, are there any other comments on this project from anybody in the audience?
I mean, it's a good project. You know, I would like to have seen it happen a year.
All right. Somebody make a motion to continue this till January 14th?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
The applicant for 12 West Tech has sent me a letter requesting continuance till 12 November. They, I believe, distributed plans to Graves yesterday, so...
Okay.
They haven't done the final review, and they expect that they'll be ready for the November meeting.
Do we have to vote on that?
Yeah.
When's the November, do you remember?
12 November.
Make a motion that we continue that hearing till November 12?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
That was for 7:00 PM?
7:00 PM.
The rest are discussions, so everything can be moved.
Okay. The next discussion would be a tri-party release from Camden Woods. Are the... Is anybody from Camden Woods here?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't you come up here and take a seat? Okay, now, this, this discussion is based on, is based on prior, prior discussions we had at the last meeting, I believe. And also, this is Coyle, why don't I... Also, we have a comment from Mr. Coyle that we need too. And let's see, ten minutes meeting. You stated that, at our last meeting, I'm reading the minutes to the last meeting here, you stated that Mr. Coyle had walked the site. Mr. Coyle raised concerns about drainage, et cetera. And in conclusion, we made a motion to send a letter to the Board of Selectmen regarding the acceptance of the road if we got a letter stating that all of the punch list that you were given by Mr. Coyle was completed, and we got a letter from Mr. Coyle stating at that time that everything was done. That's where, that's where this stands at present, okay? Just to bring everything up to...
Jimmy, did you, we have a letter from Bill that said everything was done?
No.
Everything wasn't?
No, no, no. We don't know. We have a, we have a letter, right.
The contingent of conservation.
He said, but he said that.
We just, this is the meeting. Some of the issues have been resolved, or all of the issues have been resolved?
We received the revised plan, ASBIL plans, this afternoon, and we did do a quick review of the plans and a site visit. The majority of all the issues have been resolved. We have two outstanding issues, and I mentioned to Mr. Blasclay, we were hoping to have everything at the latest yesterday to give us some time to address any outstanding issues. And mainly in the detention pond, there's a outlet control structure that handles the flow of the water out of the detention pond, and there have been changes made to that structure, and we have not received the calculations from their engineer. In addition, the ASBIL plan that was submitted does not reflect those changes. There were other issues relative to the construction of the pond and how it was constructed. I think that we feel comfortable with the, with the grades. The major issue now is that outlet control structure, which looks like a big concrete manhole, is not shown correctly in the ASBIL. is not shown correctly in the as-built, the elevations, the size of the openings, and the drainage calculations that go along with it. Were not submitted to, to us this afternoon. So we still have some concerns with that. I feel that that's something that within a few days, I think Mr. Bossclaire's engineer could provide us with that information, but unfortunately, we haven't received that as of today.
This is on my agenda for town meeting for next Tuesday.
But as petitioners, the planning board can pull the article if they feel that it's not.
Well, if, if I may.
Go ahead.
Um, just this evening, I gave Mr. Coyle the actual hydrology calculations that he's looking for. So he has those now. And I had pictures, we changed, I literally went out there and we changed that structure to conform to the new standards that Bill was asking for. So everything has been completed. I talked to Bill at three thirty this afternoon. And he says that he had to leave his office so he could go to Shrewsbury for whatever reason. And he didn't have time to look at those calculations. So I, I'm put behind the eight ball again because he left early.
Oh, he had to say, that's part of his, what he has to do. He wasn't just sitting waiting.
If I, if I may.
Bring in your calculations.
Go ahead.
Okay, if I may, on the original punch list, this was, they were never asked for. There were no calculations that were asked for. The, the outlet control, the control structure was never.
Isn't all that standard?
Was never in question.
Put it on a print?
So at the town meeting, to get the layout on October fifteenth, is when he hands me, which is a week ago, those new items. He gave me one week.
Isn't it standard and, and when you design this to have some of those side, the other diagrams and all those things on the prints, we always get them. What the, we always have something that tells what the drainage is and what all the calculations are, which is what the other consulting firm reviews usually.
Through the chair, I've been working with Jeff on this project for about a year now that you can get things buttoned up in there. There's been a lot of issues and he has addressed most of all those issues. There's, there's issues with the pavement that I spent a lot of time with him addressing deficiencies in the pavement. And recently, there was issues with icing through the winter that he, he was aware of. And that was just corrected about two weeks ago. So there's been a lot of issues in, in Jeff's defense. He has addressed most of those issues. But at, at this point, again, I was hoping to have everything and I advised him to get me everything yesterday, by end of the day, Monday. Because I don't think it's going to take a lot of time to resolve these issues. But to get it in the afternoon and then expect us to say everything is good, I mean, the as-built plan is wrong. It does, it shows the orifice in the outlet control structure as it was two, three weeks ago, not what's there today. The surveyor from Burton hasn't verified the elevation that he was instructed to, to make the hole. We need that information. I'd love to say everything is great and just believe that everything is great, but I need documentation to show us and verify. And the as-built plan needs to reflect that. And it doesn't. It's currently wrong.
Mr. Bossclaire, you know, you've had, you've had a quite a while to complete all of these, all of these items on, on that list. And it, it just seems that everything, everything piles up at the very end. And there's always one or two question marks and periods that aren't put down on a piece of paper. And, and that, that, that creates a problem. It creates a problem for us. And it creates a problem for, for you and Bill. I mean, it creates a problem for everybody. Why do people wait till the last second to do things? Well, I think probably human nature. Okay? But it makes it real difficult for us to sit back here and, 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 and make a decision, you know, in your, in your favor when everything really isn't, isn't the way it should be. So I'm going to defer to the board on this and, and let the board, let the board ask any questions they want to ask you and Mr. Coyle. And see what you come up with. Jonathan?
I don't know, I feel like last week, or last meeting rather, we tried to kind of give you the opportunity to get everything completed, to at least keep it going in the process. Because we had, knowing that we had at least one more meeting to review it and make our final approval to, to the town meeting. Unfortunately, at this point, we don't have that luxury. So I don't know how we can push it forward without another chance of reviewing it before the point in which it has to be approved. So I don't think we, at least I would feel comfortable doing that at this point.
Wendy?
I agree. We did, you know, try to work with you again last week and in the hopes that you would have everything ready for, for this evening. And it appears this, do we have time prior to the?
I mean, the board could hold a special meeting if they so choose. But that's the decision of, of the five of you.
Ronald?
Well, I wasn't here on that October eighth meeting, but I'm listening to what everybody else says and I.
You still have it?
Bill says, you know, I concur with what they say. You know, I think there's been a long time. And we have an obligation as elected and appointed officials to serve the people. And Bill certainly has one as, you know, the town engineer. And, you know, it's, it's easy to let it go and then, but all the people, whoever lives there, are the ones that are suffering during this period and not having the same quality of life or whatever that they should be having. You know, and I'm not saying it's in bad intent on your part. It's just like Jimmy said, human nature doesn't get done. But we can't overlook that. So, you know, I, I don't, I'm willing to kind of go along with whatever else anybody else thinks we should do here to get it done.
Paul?
Well, it appears to me that if Mr. Coyle received this on October ninth and he turned it around and made the inspections and came up with this in six days, he's putting a lot of time into your project along with all those other things. And I, I think that this probably should have been in Mr. Coyle's hands probably in September sometime to give him the opportunity to go through and go through it with you and get these things done. But I don't want to see the town accepting it if all the conditions haven't been met. And that's, and as I say, I have to vote on that next week, so.
Well, the only, the only way that, the only way that this, this could, this, this could actually happen, that I can see, is the fact that you would have to get this completed in the next couple of days, allow Mr. Coyle to review it. And then I would have to discuss this with the board to see if they'd be willing to come back at a special meeting. And in time for you to submit this to the Board of Selectmen, which wouldn't turn submit this to the town meeting. I don't foresee any other way that this could happen. Am I correct in saying that or?
Yes, technically, it's already on the town meeting because the warrant opened and closed long ago. So in anticipation of this actually, of this process wrapping up sooner than it has, it was, it was put on town meeting. The selectmen have executed their duties through the layout. The planning board is the petitioner on the warrant. So at any time, they can withdraw their article. If the board decided that they wanted to hold a special meeting prior to town meeting, we'd need forty-eight hours exclusive of weekends in order to post. And you, I mean, I guess theoretically, you could do it right up until an hour before town meeting. So you could have a, a six o'clock Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, meeting just to discharge this if that was the board's desire.
Would it be necessary to, for us to meet again in order to make this happen?
Yes. Because it's either that or you need to release Mr. Bossclaire from his tri-party tonight and release any possibility of recouping costs if he decides to not do the work.
Well, we can't do that. And we won't do that. That is, that is completely out of the question. What we have done in the past, I, I can vouch for this because I was on the board when it was done. We have made an exception and called a special meeting to complete a project that was unforeseeably unable to be completed during our normal meeting schedule. But again, that's something that the board as a whole has to decide on. I am not going to try to convince them to do that. I'm going to go once around the table and yea and nay if they want to do it. If they do want to do it, then we'll do it. If they decide not to do it, then that's so be it.
Okay, before you do that.
No.
Do you feel between you that you can accomplish whatever hasn't been accomplished to date?
Okay, if we.
So that would be, we, we don't want to have this special meeting if it's not going to be fruitful.
Right. And so if I may, again, Mr. Bill.
I, I can tell you through, through the chair, I, I felt that it was feasible for it to happen for tonight. But unfortunately, some of the things that needed to be done haven't been, certainly should be done.
Bill, I understand that and I respect, I respect what you're saying. But on the other hand, okay, if, if, if we can, if, if the board decides that, with, with a letter from you stating that it's done, if the board feels as though we can help somebody finalize this project and, and again, it's up to the board. It, it has happened before and it, it could happen again. Okay? But it would be up to them. And again, this would be, as, as Mr. Brooks stated, this, this would be a drop-dead date. In other words, you would have to, you would have to make sure that, that everything is in, in place. And
That's why I'm asking, the meeting is, the town meeting is the twenty-ninth. We wouldn't want to wait right until that Tuesday to have it. We'd want to do it maybe Monday or something, but to give you the most time.
So your drop-dead date is Thursday? If, if you want to have a Monday meeting, it needs to be posted on Thursday?
Yeah, I would assume that you could start posting it tomorrow.
Well, yes, I could.
Do you feel, Bill, between you, that you can, that whatever he needs to do, because I don't, I myself don't want to take anything that's all conditional that it will be done. I want it to be done.
Through the chair, I, I do think it can be done. I can meet with, with Jeff out there tomorrow to go over some of the last items that need to be completed. And then it's in his hands to get them done. It's certainly doable.
All right.
And do you have the facilities to do what you need to do?
Yes. And, but if I may, again, there was one punch list that was presented to me back in, it was September?
August.
Oh, in August. I went through that entire punch list and everything was complete. This is October fifteenth. Everything is complete. So if we could, right now, with Bill, finalize the last two items that he feels is not done and just clarify that just those two items and that's it?
Well, I think the, the two items are the detention pond. I can get into specifics on what needs to be done with that. But it's essentially the, we need the as-built plan to reflect the actual conditions of what the outlet control structure, how it was built. I need the design calculations that the engineer had previously submitted about two weeks ago. He just needs to revise those to reflect the current conditions. Jeff has given me some calculations tonight. I'm not, I haven't looked at them yet to determine what they are. So we would review those. There's a, an overflow spillway that's shown on the plans. It should be a minor item, but it needs to be addressed. And I can meet with Jeff tomorrow to go over what he needs to do to accomplish that. And then the last remaining item is, on the as-built plan in many locations, in particular for the sewer shut-off valves, everything on there shows approximate location as indicated by the contractor. So I'm a little bit concerned that no one's actually located or field verified these. They're showing them on, as an as-built, but there's a foot, there's a disclaimer saying as determined by the contractor. So I want to meet with Jeff to have him unearth the shut-offs just so that we can field verify their locations. And then make sure they're shown accurately on the as-built. Be more than happy to meet with him tomorrow.
Yeah, I think you should verify. And that's pretty great.
Yes. Yeah. And there's too many footnotes on there saying approximate as indicated by the contractor. That, we need better information than that. So I can meet with Jeff. I think it's, it's feasible for him to get it done. And quite honestly, if your meeting is six o'clock before town meeting, he doesn't have any more time anyhow. The clock has expired by seven o'clock.
All right. Well, we're giving you, we're, we're giving you a, a very large courtesy to do what we're doing. Okay? And I hope, I hope you can understand that. I can. And just for the record, the items that he has just mentioned have never been mentioned to me before. Okay? I'm gonna, again, it's not on any punch list.
Through the chair, what I would say on that is the as-built plan for the detention pond hasn't been shown accurately. The initial concern was it's constructed six inches too low. So I think I'll give Mr. Bossclaire quite a bit of leeway by allowing him to have it constructed six inches too low. Up until two weeks ago, he was going to have to raise the entire perimeter by six inches. When this plan was originally approved, the language in stormwater calculations is that they recommend a two-foot groundwater separation. If it was under current standards, it would be required. So there's a little bit of leeway that I have. So certainly, this could be a lot worse. For Mr. Bossclaire, his surveyor has indicated he has constructed it six inches too low. And so he's not rebuilding the entire detention pond. So I think we're working with him. And again, the planning board is, and I think we are too.
And let, let me explain something to you too, as far as this goes, okay? You, rather than be concerned about what was or what was not on your original punch list, right now, you, you have an opportunity, okay, to, to get this filed, get this taken care of. And it doesn't matter what happened before. Right now, you have an opportunity to get this completed. I would, I would urge you, strongly urge you, to do as much as you can to make this happen. Okay? And anything that was or was not, or, we don't care about that. All we care about is the final result. Okay? To make sure that the town is protected and that the people that are going to be on that street are protected. And, and, and so what we're asking you to do so that we can help you is, I think, very reasonable. Do you agree to that? Yes. And a lot of other planning boards would not do this. Okay? Understandable. Okay. So anyway, do we have, do we have any kind of a motion here that we could?
When are you going to, when are you going to hold a meeting? Hold Monday or before town meeting?
Pardon?
Are you going to do it on Monday or are you going to do it on an hour?
Well, it'd have to be announced at a specific date.
Yes, you have to pick a date and time.
Okay. So would Monday at, at seven o'clock or?
I prefer to do it Tuesday if I can. I'm going to town, town meeting anyways. But it's six o'clock on Tuesday, okay?
Both of us are town meetings, so.
Okay, yeah. So is that a problem, Ronnie? Do you have a problem with that? Okay.
Okay.
So we have, going to meet in the, in the auditorium, or not the auditorium, but in the high school. We'll find.
You want me to find a room in the high school?
Find a room in the high school and we'll meet there at six o'clock.
Okay. All right.
Should we have Mr. Coyle attend?
Yeah, I just put it in my calendar. I'll plan on being there.
And Bill, all these.
Either you or your assistant.
Okay.
All these conditions that he's, Jeff's supposed to meet, they're all, none of it's compromised or anything. It's right up to the way it's supposed to.
Exactly. The, I have a letter verifying that the drainage is designed and will function the same as it was originally proposed. The, the leeway we're giving him is that it's a recommendation that there be a two-foot groundwater separation. He's constructed this six inches too low. It's not a requirement. It's not a requirement. So he could be in a situation where the whole thing has to be ripped out and redone. So I think we're giving him some leeway by exercising that ability to flex on that. It's only a recommendation, not a requirement.
Well, thank you very much. Is there any public comment on Mr. Boscler's? No. Okay, would you like to make a motion that we have a special meeting on Monday, the 29th? Tuesday, the 29th, at 6 o'clock at the high school?
I'll make that motion.
Second, at 6 o'clock in a designated room.
I'll let you all know.
Can you find us a room?
Yeah, I will.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The vote.
There is a piece of...
I'll...
A classroom, there's a classroom off the auditorium. I mean, off the cafeteria too.
Okay, where are we going from here?
Morton's. Off the ocean.
Okay, this is discussion two. Request minor modifications to Pappas Recreational Complex. Is there anybody here representing Pappas?
If you want, I can... I'll start it out.
Sure.
The town has been working closely with the friends of the Pappas Recreational Committee and I know Jeff is here and so is Reverend Knight as well. I think Jeff on the other half. And they have actually raised funds and made a substantial donation to the town currently, which is actually the funds that the town has utilized to hire retained and odd engineering services.
Who's done that, Bill?
The friends of the Pappas recreational facility. So at this point, essentially, the original design for the complex had a 40 by 40 playground adjacent to the concession building. That area is a very small area. In fact, if you've been on site, which I'm sure most everybody has, where we currently have a grill set up is where that area is and we have picnic tables there. So it's a very small area. There had been talk at one point of proposing a playground up on the backside or the outfield of the softball field, which was adjacent to some residential properties. There was some concern with that location because although the size was adequate, being in the back of basically neighboring houses and also right off of Curtis Street, we didn't want to encourage people to park on Curtis Street to walk to the playground. So we're proposing now, it's very centrally located behind the performance pavilion and opposite the concession facility. It is an area of upland. We are going before conservation because we are obviously working closely to the wetlands. But it's centrally located, so we felt as though any parents with young children, whether or not... Whatever field they're at, this place location would be in the middle of the facility. Very convenient access for everybody and not in the backyards of some of the houses. Corey Brodeur from NAD has been doing the engineering on the project and I know, Corey, if I've missed anything, you're certainly welcome to add anything relative to the proposed project.
Yeah, and we provided drainage calculations to mitigate any runoff from that and they're included in the package you have.
And the size of this is 50 by 90?
Yeah.
And it's a rubber base?
It's a poured rubber surface, so it isn't pervious.
With a concrete border?
Correct.
Is that the way I read that?
Yep.
There's a lot of parking adjacent to. You got a parking in front and you got parking by the two fields. So there's a lot of parking.
Which is kind of a double sword when you consider kids and so it's not... Any intention to have any fencing or anything around the play area?
I believe there is fencing. I have seen some mock-ups of the actual... I don't exactly know what type of equipment is in there.
There would be fencing. Right now, we've laid out the footprint. It's a very small diagram of similar type of facilities.
Whether it's vegetation or...
I think the backside of it would be vegetation from what I've seen.
Yeah.
So they're proposing a four-foot fence?
Towards the street side.
On the street side?
Yeah.
Yeah, because you get that nice accessible walkway and picnic area. The gate would be right there on that side.
Yeah, right at the end of that walkway.
Great. That was the only concern that I had, parking right there.
Well, I certainly don't see any issues with the modification. How do you feel about that? Wendy?
Well, you know, I think I agree that probably wasn't a good location for the reason you stated with the parking on Curtis Street, but also in addition to that, on the backside of a girl's softball field, it's probably not a great location either. Fly balls and things of that nature. So this seems to be a much better location.
Long as there's gonna be a fence, I'm okay with it.
Jonathan?
Sounds great.
Paul?
I think they did a good job slipping it in there because when we looked at this piece of property for the high school, it was wetlands all over it and I'm glad to see that you found a place that you could put it in. And I would agree that whatever you need from us, we would be happy to do it. This probably should have been done when the whole thing was done originally.
Right. Through the chair, just to point out, the funding for this project, at this point, I understand is it's going to be 100% through the friends of the Pappas recreational facility. And so it's certainly a welcome addition to the facility. Unfortunately, at the time during the original construction, we didn't have the funds to construct it, so...
Can you make an exception for Adam? Because it said ages 2 to 12.
All town employees will be... Welcome to go there at lunchtime.
Well, is this a... This is a discussion?
Yeah, because they've asked it to be considered under the minor amendment provision of the site plan rules and regulations. So the board would need to find that it's not a substantial alteration to the approved site plan, consider it minor, and then they can approve it without need for public hearing or any of the fun stuff that goes along with a normal site plan.
Okay.
So what do we need for a motion, Mr. Chair?
You need a motion to consider it a minor amendment and a vote on that and then a motion to accept the minor amendment.
All right, I would make the motion that this be considered a minor amendment to the original plans.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then I would make the motion that... What do we have to do now?
You just accept the amendment.
Accept the amendment. All right, I'd make a motion to accept the amendment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. We do have one other minor amendment that was omitted from the agenda. It's 275 Washington Street. They continued from the last hearing. They weren't ready to proceed. Kim Mazewick from Glazreality is here to present that.
Sure.
It's the plans that you had the last time for... I believe we were on the boards when they filled in the giant hole.
Yes.
That building.
That town's still right filling in a giant hole.
A giant hole? Oh, okay, yes.
So my name's Kim Mazewick. I'm a civil engineer with Associated Builders and we just started working on this. Basically, Glazreality has purchased the property.
It fills in the giant hole?
Yeah, well, we didn't do that. That's under the existing site plan approval. But so Jerry Lazarus from Glazreality has purchased this property and currently half of it is being leased to A.H. Harris. It used to be Alpine Industries and he has a tenant, Bremen, that will go in the other half, so... But right now, he's looking at... He'd like to do some site improvements. The other contractor, Jim Chacharone, is still working, finishing up what they had done on site plan approval, but we would like to make some minor amendments to it. And basically now that they've filled in the giant hole and there's a lot of paving here, the new owner is very... Like his facilities out in Western Mass are meticulously manicured and he would like to eliminate this paving in the front here. It's a parking area, but it's a dead-end situation. It's kind of tight in here. He would rather landscape this up heavily and you can kind of see it in this front here. So taking this parking away and providing it on the side and then additional parking in the back. There's still tons of paved area here, but he really wants to try and dress this up. So he's looking at taking that out, landscaping it, and then adding sidewalks to the front entrance and another sidewalk all the way down the side. And he's got plenty of room to add a landscape buffer here next to the building foundation. So he wants... He'd like to do that as well and he'll be able to put some screening in there to hide this portion.
Can you... Adam, here's a pointer for her so she can...
Oh, you want me to use the mouse or what?
It goes Bremen, Bremen Chemicals?
It's... Yes. They... Their name now is Bremen, but they are pest elimination specialists and this is a satellite office for them. Their main headquarters offices are out in Agwam in Western Mass. Yep. But so they need... You know, they store their traps and whatnot and have... Yeah, yes, they do. They have a lot of traps.
They do a wonderful job. I had them 20 years ago.
Yep, he's very good. And they have their canine unit now, which I think is pretty neat, but...
They bring their dog in, all the fleas jump on the door and they go on at the house?
Bedbugs and everything, so it's pretty neat. He's treated like a royal person, but he's... So anyway, this was the hole that was filled in and he's looking at eliminating this paving right here. So this will all be landscaped.
So that center hole is all pavement now?
It is, yeah. It's paved all the way, so...
They installed the underground detention system to replace because originally, Mr. Chacharone was going to bring in a company that stored large building materials and was going to need 55-foot trucks to get in there and he didn't see the ability to get them in and navigate. And he was also going to use the rear of the building for storage and now since traps and chemicals are going to stay inside...
And it's all tiny. They're all small, so it's just box trucks. It's nothing big back here.
So you show us in the area in from... Yeah, what you're gonna dig out that asphalt?
This is all coming out right here.
And then make it landscape and still keep the island that exists?
This is all staying, yeah.
That'll stay, okay.
Yeah.
And then you said something about landscaping going down?
Right, so they've got plenty of pavement, so he wants to add a landscape basically in between the parking and the building. He wants to put a landscape island right... Not island, but foundation landscape along here.
And then switch the parking to the back.
Well, he'll still have parking here and then he's got additional parking in the back.
I mean, when we eliminate the ones that are up in the front?
Yep, and right now they have 24 spots and on our plan, we've got 39. And really, the trucks aren't parked there. Basically, he has about 15 employees and they come in, they get their papers and their traps or whatever they need and they're gone for the day and they take the trucks home. So they're not...
So there's no retail at the location at all? It's just simple...
Harris has retail.
Harris has retail.
Harris has retail.
They have a little bit.
But it's one of those...
So the requirement for the accessible parking spaces, that will be moved to the side of the building?
Yep, they're... Yes. Right here, closest to the...
I see a couple of handicapped in there and you'll...
Yep, there's some right here. We've got it right here and there's a walkway right to the door that's accessible.
I think Harris' retail, correct me if I'm wrong, is sort of like Alpine was. Oh, it's only wholesale.
It's only wholesale, so it's not for...
What do they sell?
So they don't have people constantly stopping by?
Yeah, so it's for contractors that come in there.
If we can get an additional landscape...
You don't have to worry about that. You don't have to use the hammer.
That's right.
Yep, and then he did want to add a couple of lights back here for security.
Did they expand that parking in the back of the building when they filled in the canyon?
Yeah, yeah, they have...
Because there's more parking back there. There was parking for trucks, I remember.
Well, they pushed... Yeah, I think it was for trucks and storage or whatnot. So they went way...
They pushed the area back as part of the previous amendment, yeah.
Yep, there was a lot of additional paving on that plan, so... So they're looking at doing that. And then on the front, so basically this... These metal panels go all the way around the whole facility right now and he wants to do a facelift on the front and then wrap it around on the side. So it's hard to see on this thing, but this is all like a stucco material. It's ephist and they'll leave the windows. They already have these, but you can't really see them because there's cars parked in front of them. So they're looking at doing that as well on the facade. That's really the extent of it.
Well, I don't... Do you have any comment about that? Any?
I think as long as they have the accessible parking spaces and I think the additional green space is wonderful.
How do you feel, Ronnie, about that?
No, no, I think it's nice.
Paul?
I think the addition of the two businesses is very good and I think the improvement in the building is excellent. As I say, I did business with Bremen when I first moved up into my jungle and they did a wonderful job. And they're very clean and I think it's a good idea. It's gonna make the building look a lot better.
All right, what do we need to do for this young lady?
The same thing that you did for the previous amendment. She was looking for a request as a minor amendment and then the approval of that.
I made the motion that we accept this as a minor amendment to the original plans.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
That's done.
Thank you. I have to say, I'm so impressed. I've never seen a board go beyond to keep contractors moving and the town and...
Second.
All in favor of accepting the amendment?
Aye.
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 It is a vote.
Thank you.
Okay, minutes to the last meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept the last minute's writ.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's our accepted.
Should we make a motion to make Mr. Brooks' assistant?
That was printed prior to me, actually. I did correct it and I printed it previous to saving the correction.
I already had a plan.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved, yep. Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned.